All right, well, let's get started because we've got a pretty full agenda. So I'll welcome Daisy and she doesn't get away with giving without giving a 30 seconds of fame. So when she comes, I'm going to put her on the spot. So I hope she's a good sport. So Wayne, a little bit, how are you doing with accessing your participants? The list looked great and I just wondered if you're having any stumbling blocks, any issues that you'd like some more support on? Share with me and share with everyone what's cooking out there.
So I can start. Oh, it's echoing. Okay, I was in charge of the student. David and I were in charge of the student forum. And so I ended up giving all the seventh and eighth graders a survey to figure out who would want to be part of this. And I did a little background. I sent the seventh grade team a presentation to kind of show their kids like what this is all about. So I didn't want to miss anybody. I didn't want to make a list of kids who I thought would want to do it and then miss people who don't usually take part in these kinds of things, but who still want to have their voice shared. So gave all the kids a quick survey and had a lot of yeses. Probably too many that we couldn't actually handle. So I have to sort of weed out which kids, I guess, to say no to. But maybe I can give everybody the survey and just pick a handful for the forum.
Sure.
At least because kids are excited about this and they definitely want to take part in our future design. So that was really cool and I'm glad that I didn't just pick, you know, the 10 kids who always get picked for things, but you know, gave it to everybody to see who wanted to do it. And I had some surprising people say yes. So it was cool to see that.
Wonderful.
Yeah, and David put some kids on there too. So it was really nice to see who he put on there. I think we have a good group so far.
And just know that you can have as many as 20 because you could have 10 for the high school component of that and then 10 different ones for the middle school component. So you could have 20 that are actually attending a forum and then everyone else would do the survey.
So the survey is unlimited. I can have as many as I want for the survey.
Yeah, that's right.
Thanks.
All right, see someone just joined by phone. If you could check in and let us know who you are.
Sorry, that was actually me, Lindsay. I was having internet trouble, but I finally was able to get my internet to work. So that's why I hung up. Sorry.
All right, got it. That's all right. I knew that Haley was going to lose power and she might try the phone. So I didn't know if she was doing a simul broadcast here. A question for you, Lindsay. Are you, are you able to access all the documents in the Google Doc?
I am, yeah, in terms of all the forum stuff and the agenda stuff and all that that you've sent. Yep.
Oh, that's good. Now, do you have a Gmail account?
I do. It's just instead of having it attached to a Gmail email, it's just attached to the regular email I use. So I don't have one more. I have to try and.
I got it. Beautiful. Well, that was my concern because I didn't want to lose anyone. All right. Any other, any other thoughts or issues, either good things happening or questions that you might have?
Wynton, I have a quick question. This is David. The middle school one, we have a lot of kids, as Kelsey said. And you know, if we know some of them can be long-winded, are you going to moderate the session to try to, you know, avoid somebody monopolizing the whole time?
Absolutely. I'm going to move it very quickly and try to have short, succinct responses, especially because, and I'll just use David and Kelsey as the example. I'm needing you as design team members and everyone in your respective forum to capture kind of the essence of what participants are saying. So the shorter, the better and feel very free to kind of royally condense to a couple of words. The fewer words that capture what people are saying will help us when we're doing the analysis of data. And so keep that in mind. And also, some of you may not be as facile with Google Docs as others. Just know that all of you could be contributing data in that Google Doc simultaneously and it's going to capture what you're saying. So if there are two DT members like Kelsey and David, don't worry about waiting. Kelsey, if David's putting something in, just roll with him and it will capture it. And that's the beauty of a Google Doc. Any other thoughts or issues? Doing okay? Anyone struggling with not getting 10 people in your, in your first forum?
Um, I have. Gain a little feedback.
Go ahead, Kayla.
I have some people in mind that were added and I have some more. I'm doing the staff one and I have some more that I could add, but I don't really have staff from the other elementary schools. And so I was thinking it would be helpful if you had some staff from Brookfield and Braintree added in before I start adding more already people. So if anybody has any guests.
I got the directory for everybody, Kayla, so we'll chat.
All right.
Ah, information is power. That's good. All right. Any other, anyone else? Haley, go ahead.
Yeah, I think Brookfield only has two. We were talking, Richard and I were checking in. We only really have two staff right now. Unless, I didn't know if Para's, if they would go under teachers or staff.
They would go under staff.
Okay, so I think there's one we could ask at Brookfield that has a child that is in the high school that might be interested. But it has been hard to think also about staff or teachers that have connections to the high school too, because I feel like that's, could be important. And also to get them more interested in joining the forum. They probably will want to have some sort of attachment to that high school. And so that's been a little bit tricky for me. I did hopefully get the two Brookfield teachers that have had some direct connection to sign up, but we'll, we'll see.
Well, if you have to shame them into it, I mean, they're representing the whole town. Go ahead, Lindsay.
I was just going to mention, I had put on there Jeremy Rilling, who I had reached out with. So I was just going to put out coaches. If there were other coaches that might have, I didn't know. I mean, they're considered staff and they sometimes have some pretty good connections and feedback. So those might just be somebody else to consider as you're thinking of folks.
Yeah. See, what's happening right now is the beauty of the design team is that you can kind of cross pollinate and you should because you come from different experiences, different communities. As you begin to sort who's going to get the first 10 invite, think about diversity of your three communities and of your force. Well, you're not doing the tech center per se, but you're doing four schools. Your three elementaries and your middle and high school. Think about the balance in your, in your team. And for those of you that have 20 or 30 names, for the second set of forums, same thing. Think about those that have balance. And as you're having the conversations, just be really clear that we don't want to prevent anyone from communicating their voice. It's just that we can have a limited number in the forum and no maximum number in the surveys. So keep that in mind. Any other thoughts or issues before we go into the next agenda item? Okay. Has Daisy joined us yet?
No, she hasn't, but I just emailed her and I emailed her a link again to the, to the meeting and the phone number. So she may just need, need a little help. And I told her to contact me if she has any questions. So hopefully we can get her link in. She might not be super familiar, although her kids should be able to help her.
Okay. That's again, power of technology, isn't it? Isn't it ironic that sometimes we have to rely on the younger generation to help, help, help parents and grandparents and all become active with this? Well, good for you. Let me go into. Talked about the evolving list. Any, any problems with actually the inviting of participants? Are you doing that more via email? Are you doing it face to face? As much as that can be done in a COVID environment? How, what are your successes here?
I've been emailing.
Go ahead, David.
I was just going to say, I've been emailing and texting, a couple of phone calls. But just to confirm, Wynton, once, once we narrow down the 10, there'll be, there'll be some sort of formal invite to it with a link and everything, right? That somebody else.
Yeah, I'm hoping that that's Tina Schindel. And Anne, maybe you can help us with that behind the scenes. We established Barry, the process I'm doing with Barry is just about the same time as, as yours. Their first forum is tomorrow night. They have two of them. And their information technology director did a kind of a blanket process. I, I provided the information and then he did the invite. So we'll, we'll take, take that and I'm just making a note to contact.
I think as long as we have email addresses or you know, if they're, well, I would imagine everybody's going to be able to do email. Linda Lubold from the, from the OSUD office is kind of our administrative assistant person that's helping out. So with a combination of her and myself and hopefully no more having to rely on IT. Hopefully we got, we've got things under control.
Okay.
So we should be able to help get that, get that out.
All right. And Anne, maybe you can share with everyone what we know from Tina about the, the ability now that we have our own, I'll call it domain, where the shared directory will go from my shared directory to actually the school's shared directory. And I think the invites to meetings will come through that. Am I accurate in that, Anne?
Hmm, no. My understanding is they're still working on that shared drive. Because there is still a few glitches there. But the meeting invites should be coming through, through me. Although she's, Linda's not going to warn, the, the feedback sessions, the focus groups are not official, like meeting to be warned meetings. So actually, that was one thing that I wanted to talk to you at the end of this is, and so we better probably do it now, is she was wondering if you wanted to do those through a regular Google Meet versus putting it through the OSUD Google Meet system.
I think I'd prefer to do it through your school district.
Okay.
My, my internet's a little sketchy. In fact, I had, on Friday, this computer died. It went to the hospital. I used my backup over the weekend and it took me a couple of days to get things up and running. So if there was a delay in my communication with you, it's because of that. I got it back today and initially it didn't work. It was the same as it was. And somehow, in installing a external keyboard mouse, it had changed my laptop mousepad so that nothing worked. And I was a little, little frantic at about four o'clock today and the tech from North Branch at Montpelier called me back and said, I think that's what the problem is. And so we, we troubleshoot it and I'm good to go with fingers crossed. So here we are.
Okay, so I can set those, I can set those Google Meets up then. It, it should work, work out.
Okay.
And if I can't figure it out, Linda's got a, got a, she's got an email for all of us. Oh, but it would, it would be going out to the whole, oh man. Let me, let me just check in with her and Tina just to make sure how we, how we're supposed to do that because it shouldn't be that hard.
I think that's what Tina's setting up because she, she captured all our email addresses.
Right, right. But that's for these meetings. But if we're going to do the feedback forums with certain individuals, then is it going to cause, I just want to make sure it's not going to cause some kind of weird glitchy thing. And if we have to, I've got great internet connection. So I could always do it through my personal email. Although I'm supposed to do my board work through my OSUD email. So we'll, we'll figure it out. I'll talk to Tina and Linda and we'll figure it out.
I would encourage Tina's office to handle that because I think it makes sense. They've got the expertise and this is quite important. And we've got enough other stuff to do, not that they don't, but I think that would be the best way to go. Do any of you need any feedback on your lists so far? Do we need to go in and just share those and talk through it? Or are you comfortable? Because we're starting next week on February 3rd. We're starting our first forum and we'll need to have those people invited and sent the packet of information, when I say packet, it's a, it's an attachment, the packet of information three or four days before the actual forum. And I, as you may have seen, I'm asking forum participants to do some self brainstorming before they come to the forum, just to have some points ready. Because sometimes with a new group that you don't have much of a relationship with, the facilitator asks the question and there, there are 10 blank faces and 10 blank screens and it doesn't go so well. So some advanced planning will help. And also, one of the roles that I, that I need you all to play is if it is a little stymied and dialogue isn't really starting, be prepared yourself with some feedback to be able to start the conversation. And then I'll, I'll take it from there. But I might say to you, and in this case, Anne, in your group, I might say, Anne, do you have any thoughts about what to start, stop, or continue? And so I wanted you to just have a heads up that I didn't want to surprise you with that, but be prepared that you could, you could get us moving. So that's a really important role. Two things. One, you've got to be the dialogue starter and flow. And the other is to capture the essence of what the participants say. Any questions about that before I go to Gus? Yeah, Gus, and then I'll go to David.
I didn't realize I had.
Okay, David, go ahead.
So maybe I didn't understand something, but are there, are there going to be a handful of questions to prompt some dialogue and conversation? And if so, do we have those yet?
Yeah, you do. And what I'll do is I'll share that with you. They're in the, in the Google Doc. Let me, let me share a couple of files with you right now. See what's going on here.
So a couple of teachers in the, in the, in the group. I just did a little professional development with this thing called PairDeck. And I'm wondering, I mean, we want, we want, we want to hear people, but I'm wondering, I don't know, Wynton, if you're familiar with this thing called PairDeck. Are, are some of these teachers aware of it? It's a way of allowing people, like you can do this little thing where they just have a little post-it note and they can kind of type and you can put some questions out. I just, or do we want it all to be oral, Wynton?
I'd love to do that. I'm actually exploring that with JAM in the Barry process. I just, I want to make sure that we're not too complicated because I don't know how quickly folks will be able to come on. So we may end up doing something like that and I'm very open to it. I have a backup process though, and I'm going to share that with you right now. Can you see the, the document that I'm sharing with you now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So the, the title of it is Feedback Forum Operation. And it's, I updated it today. It's January 25th. It's version two. This just gives participants a little bit of background as to what we're going to be doing. And then we go into the sub-questions. And so this is what, what you'll hear in the forum. And the first one is what should the Randolph Union High School stop, start, or continue doing to ensure the students who choose to do so are sufficiently prepared and successfully complete their selected Randolph Technical Center program? And so let me move you to how you collect your data. And it's on this form. And this, the question is just the excerpt of it. And with these bullets, you'll just type in, in this Google Doc, keep hitting cursor down and it gives you more space. And then when it comes to consensus points, this is where I'll try to capture the essence of, what's one thing we could agree on around the preparation and successful completion of a program for tech center students? And then one or both of you can hopefully capture some of that essence. And also, don't be surprised if you see me doing something live as well. So there might be two or three of us putting data in. And then we go on to the second question. And are you all, Anne, can everyone see this document as well?
Yes, we can. Is everybody on board?
Well, I can see it on the screen right now, but I don't have access to it on my own. So I can see the list that we're putting together for the feedback forums, but I guess I'm not sure where to find this document on my own. Sorry.
That's, yeah, I'm assuming that's David speaking?
Yes.
David, it should be. I send you out these links that are, that will show the Google Doc where this is located. And it will come to you as an email and it will show you at the bottom, the title of the document. You click on that dark blue band. It will take you right into the document itself. So are you not receiving those?
No, I'm not either. When, when did you send that?
Uh, well, let me look. Here's the share. Oh, maybe I didn't. Holy moly. Here it comes now. All right. I'm just going to say, here it is. My mistake.
My, my other question is just to confirm is, I noticed in a couple of spots here, it says Technical Center. But just to confirm, we're talking about the middle school and high school and not the Technical Center, correct?
Correct. But this is the, this is the Randolph Union High School Student Data Collection. So I have different questions for the, I don't want to say this. No, I have the same questions, but middle school students may have some feedback about this and parents may have some feedback about it and business may have some feedback about it as parents or in their, their role as community. So these are questions, and Anne will be more familiar with this than anyone. These were questions that when the school board did their strategic planning retreat that caused this process to happen, they developed some framing questions around tech center, around senior project, around advanced placement. The fourth one is a new question. What do, what do students need who choose not to attend the Tech Center and enroll in AP courses? What does, what do students need to maintain a positive attitude? What do students need to plan for either world of work, future training and/or education after high school? You see, the first forum is really about high school and it's about what students need in advance before they come into high school. The second forum will be predominantly about middle school, but it's going to have impact from elementary, actually pre-K through high, high school graduation. So the board had asked us to query these questions to be able to collect the data, analyze it, and then help the board through the work of the design team create the three-year strategic plan.
And David, in order for some of the students to get into the tech center, you have to, you have to be, you have to have accomplished certain things. And so we're trying to sort of make sure that students are aware of it. And if students see gaps, you know, like I was denied getting into the tech center my junior year because I didn't have this, that, or the other thing that I needed in order to be successful. Or I entered the tech center and then I was asked to leave the tech center. So we're, we're just trying to get, get at that a little bit.
Okay. Well, my apologies for not sharing that. The three documents I have here now are all shared with everyone.
Jeff has a question. Jeff Higgins has a question, Wynton.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, so I, I feel like there's some background information that the design team doesn't actually have at this point. So two questions. One, is there a strategic plan draft already that we should have reviewed? And then also, are there sets of questions like that that we haven't seen yet that are, are different for each forum?
Yes, those, well, let me ask it, answer it in two ways. There's a current strategic plan that was done in 2017 that ended in 2020. And that's on the school district website. And the questions that I have been developing a frame around to get your feedback on were issues that the school board wanted to probe with the internal and external stakeholders. And so that's the genesis of where the questions came from. We're going to get feedback, I'm sure, that goes well beyond those categories. And that's okay. In fact, that's, that's lovely. But yes, you're right, Jeff. That's, that's what's, what's happening here.
Okay, so we just, we just got those questions now.
Yes.
And there is no draft of the new strategic plan yet?
Nope. No, we're going to be developing that ourselves based on the feedback from either surveys or forums. Good. I went through that rather quickly. Any questions, thoughts, or issues on what your role will be in the forum? On the questions, do the questions seem okay? I guess you haven't had a chance to really see those questions, have you?
I have a question.
Okay.
I'm just looking, I'm, I'm thinking I'm extending Jeff's question here. But looking at some of those questions on that first one, if say the community members are going to get those same questions, I can see a lot of them being more baffled by what we're asking than having useful feedback. Certainly for some of the earlier ones. I mean, I don't know how much insight a community or a business leader has into how we run AP courses, for example, or if they would even feel they could give useful feedback. So are we, are we tailoring other questions to different groups? Or are they all getting exactly the same nine or 10 questions? I can't remember how many I saw.
Yeah, yeah, they're all getting the same questions. And let me go there now. And we, fortunately, we have another meeting before we go live. I say we do. I think we do. Let me just double check. So today is the 25th and. Yeah, we meet, we meet next Monday, the February 1st. And our first forum is Wednesday, February 3rd. We have two forums that night. So we have a little bit of time between now and when we go live to get the questions. But we're going to spend some time tonight on this. Let me go through because you haven't seen it before. This will go out to all participants in advance. It's Feedback Forum Operation is the title. And it talks about just how the, how the forum will run. Let me spend a little bit of time. This is your current mission statement. What knowledge, skills, and tools do students need to be prepared for the next stage of their lives, which justify the resources invested by the community? That's a fixed mission statement. I suppose if we got totally different data and the board would look at that feedback and make a decision, do we change the mission or is that still, is the feedback consistent with where we're going, where we have been going? These questions came from not only the board's strategic planning process, but they also came from what are called N's statements that are in your board policy. So what, what this document will say to forum participants? It says Board Goal Number Two features eight stakeholder forums, specifically target high school culture and academic programs. The second set of forums focuses. The second set of forums focus on soliciting feedback around middle school culture, climate, and student transitions between elementary, middle, and high school. And so the second set of forums will be more kind of wide open than the first. The first is quite targeted on high school. And what, what this document encourages the participants to do in advance, as I said before, is brainstorm responses to the list of sub-questions below. And let's spend a little bit of time. Are you at, are you able to see these questions on your screens or is it too small?
Yes, we can see them.
All right, is that better or is that takes it off? Did that make it bigger on your screens? Guess not. All right, so take, take a moment and just read the question.
Wynton, that did make it bigger. That was better.
Okay. All right.
This is Heidi. Are there going to be questions focused on the culture and the climate right now in the middle school? In the high school?
Yeah, high school, some, not as much as the middle school. Do you think we should have some high school culture questions?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Let's, let's review all the questions first and then we'll go back and do some edits.
Sounds good.
So let, hold that one, Heidi. And, and welcome this evening. I'm glad you made it safely.
When
Yeah.
When looking at these questions, are they, do we need to think of overall? Are we thinking of this year? I just think this year has been so crazy. We might need to put a disclaimer about it's not, we're not just focusing on this year. Unless we're, like, we shouldn't be, right?
Correct. Yeah, I call it the COVID disclaimer, yes. We'll ask them, because we're projecting three years ahead in the future. And so hopefully, we're not going to be dealing with COVID-19 three years from now. And yes, I'm, I'm prepared to talk with them about it. And in fact, I, if it doesn't, let me just make a, a note here. That's just for me, just to make sure that I get it in there. Looking at the first two questions, those seem okay to you?
I do think it's going to be hard, these first two, for middle school students. I mean, maybe we can, I think maybe reordering the questions from middle school because it's going to be a group of 10 seventh, eighth graders who don't know much about the tech center, who are uncomfortable anyway, kind of like in a new group. And so I think that we got to start off in the middle school with some lighter questions that they would be able to answer, like what do you need from adults in the high school? Like, that might be more of a question to start with for them. And then these two questions could maybe at the end that some kids might know, but they, I don't think many know, you know, what they need to do to get into a tech center program. And they've probably heard of senior project, but they're, we have, we don't talk about that in middle school. So that's going to be kind of a rough way to start out for them, I think, on that very first forum with two pretty tough questions.
Got it.
I think with them too, it's going to have to be like some kind of start that's like a check-in to kind of get to know each other. Because I mean, again, it's going to be 10 sort of random kids thrown together virtually. You know, so just, and we can talk about that, you know, me, you, and David later, but just thinking about, have to be a bit more creative with their forum, I think.
And where is this document?
It should be, I shared it with you. It should be in your Google Doc.
All I got was the high school questions, not this set of sub-questions.
All right. Let me make sure that you're on. This is David Roller?
Jeff Higgins.
Jeff, oh, sorry. You're on it. I'll send it to you again.
I see the 125 high school student forum data form. Right, that's the attachment you just sent.
Yeah. Everyone should have them all now.
Okay.
So the second question focuses around senior project. Probably the same thing for middle school as far as feedback. They might not even know what a senior project is.
So just to sort of go back on Kelsey's point here, this is, this is kind of my worry with some of those people we're surveying who aren't involved enough in the schools or aren't inside them enough to really know what we're talking about. I just, I'm wondering like, for example, if I were in the community leaders forum and I'm presented with this question, certainly in the first couple, I think after the first few questions, I might have a bit of a bad taste in my mouth because I'm going to feel like I'm not going to be able to contribute. So I just think we need to think about, for those forums where people haven't been in the school same decades, that they're starting off with a question that they can answer and they can contribute with.
Okay.
And can I just, just, I'm going to, I'm going to shut up here in a second here. Just, I wonder if, since we just saw these now, if it would be more effective for us to get a chance to read these and then provide feedback on them, you know, rather than, you know, watching the clock here and, and, you know, trying to get this. I mean, I think we really needed to have looked at these prior to meeting about them.
Okay, I agree, and I'm sorry that I didn't get them to you sooner. My only concern about that is our first forum is a week from tomorrow. And we're going to meet, we're going to be meeting, no, it's going to be a week from Wednesday. And we're going to have a meeting two days before that. If we don't at least have a framing of the concept of those questions, the participants aren't going to have much advanced opportunity to do some brainstorming. So I'm happy to go wherever, wherever the committee wants to go, but I'm also looking at the, at the timeframe.
Yeah, but like Richard said, like I, we have the first community one with the businesses and nonprofits. These are questions, we can't really ask them. I mean, none of them really, I don't think they can really answer.
Okay.
I mean, so there might be have to have a set, a different set of questions. Or maybe Richard and Anne, we can get together, or everybody, some groups can get together and, and put together some questions that are towards their audience.
Well, let me, let me ask you this question. Take a look at, take a look at this overarching question. If we were to ask any of the stakeholders that question, would that be easier for them to get a start?
I think that would be a good conversation starter, certainly for community members who haven't been inside the school in a while. I think with that particular group of people, it's more about opening a dialogue because we don't, we don't know what they do and don't know about what we do. So we need to kind of bridge that gap, really.
Okay.
Yeah, and we need to ask, I mean, I think they're, they want to get feedback on the current culture and climate at the middle school and high school. So those are key questions to ask.
Well, and how are they, if they're, if they don't know what's going on in the middle school and high school academically? Are we sure they know what's going on within the school and high school culture and climate? If they don't know what's going on academically, because they're not in the school to know academically?
Not everything is academically.
Yeah, I know.
I think the, the one, certainly with the community members, I, I don't know how everyone feels about this, but to me, it seems that that one's more useful just to learn how the general public perceives what it is that we do and how we can make a better connection there and, and reassure them that their practices aren't being wasted.
Yeah. Okay.
I wonder, I wonder, is there any way to provide some information on what the current scenario? So again, you're saying like, what should we do, stop, say? Is there a way to provide some information about what is currently done to prepare children for the TCC or for the senior project that maybe later in the discussion you could bring up? These are some of the things that are currently provided. You know, what do people think? What's your feedback on that versus kind of assuming, like you say, that somebody, maybe an elementary parent, might know what senior project is, but isn't going to know what's currently done for them?
Sounds good.
Wynton, when we did this before, we, we were, we were looking at, and we were asking the community about sort of what they, they wanted the schools to provide. And they, and they gave us a fairly kind of generic, you know, found the rest of our mission statement, you know, those foundational skills in this, this, and this. And I wonder if we want to re, I mean, maybe we revisit that a little bit for the academic part. So when we talk about foundational skills, what, what are you expecting? Or what do you want? What do you think are the good foundational skills that students should be coming out with? Maybe, I, I don't know. I'm just
Oh, that's a good idea.
Have that in the rest of our, because our mission statement is this first overarching question or statement, and then it's specifically to foundational skills, but we haven't revisited, what, what exactly do you mean by foundational skills in social studies? What does that mean to you as a student? What does that mean to you as a parent? What does that mean to you as a community member? What would that look like?
Okay. Okay, got it? All right.
And there are some other ones in there, like adaptability.
Right.
A use of technology. You might want to include, and I believe when we talked about, you know, climate, if you look at life skills, some of the discussion that we had whenever we did that 15 years ago was, you know, life skills wasn't just, you know, doing the laundry and going shopping. It was about emotional intelligence. It was about cultural awareness. It was about conflict mediation. Those types of things were some of the things that came up in those community forums. But we didn't, they weren't really, we, it got lumped into life skills. So I just wonder if we want to just sort of touch base again and see if, if the community or students want to be more specific.
Okay. All right. Let's just scan the other questions and see if there's some to preserve, because I'm going to have to jettison a bunch of the questions that are here that the board was interested in and do some adaptation. But in a one-hour session, we're not going to be able to spend time on many more than like seven or eight questions. This one, let's go here.
I think you could probably group like five through almost eight or nine together because they're kind of all asking a similar question just around different parts of the school, whether it's advanced placement, senior project, it's sort of what are you doing to prepare for that higher level of academics? So I wonder if those could be grouped together.
Okay. Is there some mutual agreement about that?
I agree. I think that means people could participate and say, well, I'm referring here to the tech center. I'm referring to advanced placement. And that gives them a choice of how they participate.
Got it. Okay. What do you think about students at the high school having a positive attitude? That stay or that go?
So I'll give a little background to that one. One of the things that came up in the board meeting was just what some board members were concerned about is sort of some of the, the talk among students is Randolph High School sucks. We, you know, this was in a great place. And so it was sort of looking at, is that, is that real? Is that just a small portion of the population? Is that a concern that the rest of the community has? If kids feel like our high school isn't any good and, you know, all these other places are better? You know, it's not doing what it should be doing for us. We wanted to kind of get at that.
Got it.
Questions?
Go ahead.
I think the middle-level kids, that would be a question that's appropriate for them, for sure, because that's something that they can, they can reach to. And, and like Anne was saying, like they, you know, they can think about sort of their own notions of how they feel about being a student in the middle school. So I think that one should definitely stay for our forum.
Okay.
I think we need to reassure them that if they actually do feel that way, it's safe to say so.
Uh huh. There, there are questions that, as we get to this, that will focus on that issue. And it's this one. Ensure there are multiple avenues for student voice in the high school community. And the same for staff voice in the high school community. So Richard, does that, does that address what you just said?
Yeah, I was more thinking in terms of these, these students who might be quite intimidated by the whole process, just feeling safe to say, well, actually, I don't have a very good perception of my school, rather than being surrounded, you know, by important-looking adults and going, I'm not going to say what I think because I feel like I might get in trouble. So I'm, I'm more talking about the process of the forum itself than the questions.
Okay.
Yeah, and I want to be welcoming to middle school students willing to participate, but at the same time, you ask any middle school student or high school student, they're all going to say their school sucks. I mean, it's not that, it's not that Randolph sucks anymore than the next school in that town.
But it's funny though, they say that, but if somebody trashes their school, they're ready to put up their fist and say, bring it on. So that's, it's an interesting phenomenon. I want to just probe this one, that students maintain a strong connection with at least one adult in the school community. There's some national research around that that's quite important that that happened.
I think that's a great one to keep.
Okay.
The team four, appreciate that one because that came up in our trauma training about how important that is.
Yes. So did the school do, did the school do trauma training?
We are trauma-informed schools now.
Beautiful, beautiful. I did that with my schools a few years ago, and that's a very powerful process. Good for you. Let me, before we do any more editing on the high school side of these questions, let me take you to the middle school. This is forum series two, and it talks about positive culture and climate. And I, I will define those for folks in advance so they know the difference. The second one is, do they like the operating system for middle school now? Or if not, should we research and consider other types of middle school configuration? And that's probably more about grade level, but it will be whatever people think it is. And then what's the right leadership model for the middle school? How do we ensure that students feel physically, emotionally, and intellectually safe? And this one is about the smooth transitions from elementary to middle.
Can you go back, can you go back to number three?
Yeah.
Nope, number two. Number two, I have to say, as a sixth-grade teacher for like almost 12 years, it's always a mystery as to how the middle school is operating. And they do switch it up, which is perfectly fine. But as someone who has to deal with it on a regular basis, the transitioning of our sixth graders to seventh grade, I usually just defer to the seventh-grade teachers at the meeting and say, please explain how you're doing it now. So if I don't have a good idea as to, you know, as to how it's functioning, I doubt anyone else in the forum would. So I just want to put that out there so that whoever's running the forum or running that question might want to say, based on your knowledge of how the middle school is operating or something, because it's, it's always a little bit of a mystery. I think they're always improving upon it, which is fine, but I would never say I'm an expert and I do at least never say I'm an expert, and I do at least 15 transitions just for students every year.
Well, then you're going to love the last series of questions, and I'll, I'll surprise you with them when we get there.
In terms of language, Wynton, for, for the middle school students and even the high school, can, can, are you going to wordsmith these a little bit? So some of the jargon is explained and maybe some examples given?
Yes, yep. So this, these are the transition questions. And so number seven. What systems need to be in place so parents feel comfortable with student transitions from elementary to middle and middle to high school? So I think that the, the feedback that was just shared a moment ago. That may begin to get at the issue. And I forget who it was, whoever the middle school teacher is. Or the elementary teacher, I guess.
That was Jeff.
Okay. So these are the questions. These are seven current questions for the second forum series. And my question to you is, do you like it better that the question, and some of them just, it's not appropriate, but do you like it better that, you know, what should the school stop, start, or continue doing so that it's very clearly some things need to end, some new things need to start, or we like some things that are going on now, or would you rather have it just be open ended like this one? Should the middle school continue operating as it does now? And if not, what should we research and consider? Talk to me a little bit about your feelings on the different styles of questions.
I think the star or the stop, start, continue. Again, the only challenge with that is it sort of indicates you should have knowledge. And so I think that there are people that might, if they go, oh, well, I don't know what they're doing, so I don't know if they should stop or start. So I kind of like the open ended more, especially for like the community and parent ones where people may not know as much, and therefore they don't feel like they're supposed to.
Okay.
Right. But I think for the middle school students and high school students, I do think stop, start, continue gives them to work with. I think if it's too, I think, I think Lindsay's right that for the community, open ended, but I think middle school, like they need to be like thinking about, okay, what do I want to stop at my school? What do I want to continue? I also like not to blow the whole thing up, but just looking at the questions, obviously for David and I, these questions are so much more relevant to our forum. So I feel like if I imagine having 10, 10 students, like starting with this one, and then going to the high school one, would be much more successful, I think, for us, because the high school one is just a tough one for us to start our first forum with, you know, but if we started here, then by the second forum, so I don't know if we can switch, just David and I, switch our order to have this one go first.
Well, I can easily start, I can easily move the, the first forum series to be the middle school questions in that one, and then move the high school questions to the second forum series, if you think that's a better way to go.
I do, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that.
The middle schools ones seem a lot more like open ended and, and easier to get discussion going. So then if they, I even think about like how much more talkative we are in this group versus the first time around. So I just feel like those ones are more open ended, might be better to start with for everybody.
Okay. Well, consider.
Does anyone have a clear concise answer for a community member if they say, well, how does the middle school work now?
That's where, that's where I would need to rely on design team members.
Not here, so hopefully she knows.
I just want to start on the fly. I think, I think that should be prepared, just so we can give a nice quick summary of the things they need to know, rather than sort of scrambling for information during the forum.
And I can attend that one. Like, I've only been there for a year, but this is my first year, but I could attend the community one. I don't know that I want to run that one, but I could be there to sign in for the middle school portion, portion of the first, the first forum.
I agree with Richard. Like, if I go to both the staff and the teacher forums, which I was planning to, because I'm running one of them, I would love to have a little quick summary of how the middle school's running.
In the community and the businesses all have kids in the middle school and high school.
Okay.
All of them that I put in, I think almost eight or nine of them all have students. So they should be fairly. What's going on?
Well, it wouldn't be a bad idea to have that in our back pocket, so to say, in case something happens that people don't really know. And I don't really know, so it might make sense to have someone in those forums that, that does. Again, I can't see your screens right now because I'm in full page, so I'm only going from voices. But someone spoke up and said, was it Ann, that you might, oh, no, Ann, you're already attending the, the business leader nonprofit. What, what other forums do you think this issue might come up, might come up with parents, maybe?
Yes. And so this is Jeff. How about instead of having someone at the forum to do that two or three sentence definition, that we as a group come up with the three sentence definition of how the middle school runs? It sounds very administratively. So does it mean seventh and eighth grade? Or it could be seventh, eighth and ninth grade? Or you're talking about block scheduling? Or you, you know, so what, what do we mean by how it is run?
Okay. Well, are there members of the middle school staff and high school staff on this committee that would be willing to put together the three sentence, not a disclaimer, but the three, three sentence explanation?
Well, it's just Lisa and I, this is Kelsey, who are, I mean, I'm not high school, but I'm middle school. And so I, I'm the only teacher from the whole RUHS that's here. So I mean, Lisa and I can work on that together. I work closely with her, so we can work on that together outside of this group.
Okay. Is that for middle school or high school?
I'm middle school. She's, she's seven, eight, nine. So there's nobody here who's really tied to the high school. Lisa's. Was this one.
Lane's not with us tonight, but maybe we can have him help with that as well. And I'll, I'll read, I'll, I'll put that in the notes.
And can that information go to all forum people in case it comes up?
Yeah, for sure. Okay. Got it. Okay. You're all worth your wait and go. This is, this is some great feedback. Anything else in the questions?
When, if we have, if we have feedback for the questions after this meeting tonight, we kind of think of something and we say, hey, what if we worded it this way or whatever?
Yep.
Is there a way that we can?
Yes.
Put it on the document? Or should we not share? Are you going to wordsmith these? What, sort of what's the process going to be?
Well, what you can do, I have, I have given you all edit capability. And if I, let me just look here. I don't know if you can see this. Can you see that screen?
Yes.
All right. So you can be a commenter, and maybe that's what I should do, is give you all commenter. Although I have to give you editor rights, so that when you're in the forum, you're able to do simultaneous edits. So I guess I'm going to give everyone edit, editing authority. And I think you also can just post a comment. But I'm comfortable.
Wynton, you can comment even if you're an editor.
Okay, good. All right. So I'll, I'll keep your editor authorizations in. Just comment on the side. It will be a little side window, and I'll take a look at that and make that change if it seems prudent. And if people don't like that, then you need to comment saying it should be, rather than A, it should be B. And it's, it's a tougher way to get at it, but I think that with some patience and collaboration, we can refine our list of questions. And I'm very comfortable having you all do that.
I do wonder, I think it was Heidi that mentioned, like structuring them more for each forum. Would it, would it make sense to like copy and paste them so that maybe, weren't we talking about how, you know, it might be appropriate for parents, but not for the middle school students? Would it make sense to create some new questions depending on who the forum is for?
Yes, and I do have some language already done. Looks like I need to do more of that. My only, my only concern, and I just want to share with you what the pros and cons are. When it comes to the, the Google form survey. I can, I can put in some open ended responses, but in order to have some consensus data or some prioritization, and it actually shows in graphs what, what some, some consensus thoughts are, you need to have similar questions. And so that's, that's my only dilemma. And I think I can do an amalgamation of, you know, some dropdown menus with some prescribed responses, and people choose a response. And then I can just do some open ended. And what, what it populates with in the open ended is everybody's statement. So the design team then can work through that. So I'm just trying not to make this too cumbersome, but at the same time, getting at the essence of what people are trying to say. And I'm hearing you very clearly on, there needs to be some differentiation here. So I guess what I'm saying is, give me, give me a shot at it. We've got a week or so to be able to get it right. I will get at it first thing tomorrow morning. And you'll begin to see some evolving questions that will be more tailored to the stakeholder groups that we're talking with. Other thoughts or issues?
We did something like this last year where we had to set up surveys ourselves. And I think we remember having a similar issue where certain people wouldn't be able to answer certain questions. So what we did is, we said, if you don't feel you're able to answer this question, then you can skip it. Or you might be able to say on the question, this is, this question is aimed at this audience. So I don't know if that's something we might consider for the differentiation piece.
Yep. Got it. That'll be a placeholder for me, just to remember to go back and do that. It's a good suggestion. Okay. Anything else? Going back to the high school questions. No, these were the high school now. So I'm going to, I'm going to switch the order. I'll do middle school, starting on February 3rd, and then I'll do high school, starting on February 16th. Anything else pop out at you? And I'm assuming that some of you are in the Google Drive now, so you're actually able to see your own questions. All right, I'm going to stop sharing here. There we go. There probably is a way that I can be in a document, just a sec, Lindsay, that I can be in a document and still see you. Is that, is that true? Okay. So rather than share my whole screen, I just need to share part of my screen. All right, Lindsay, go ahead.
I was just wondering, I apologize, maybe you mentioned this earlier. How are you wanting the groups to tailor down to the first 10? Like, are you wanting those of us that are in the group to then go and, and kind of move the list around so that the first 10 are the 10 that are the ones? Are we supposed to kind of outside of this connect with one another to kind of also figure out like, who's going to scribe at the forum? Like, is that kind of the best way to do it? Is just each individually kind of touch base with our prospective co-forum folks to kind of finalize that piece of things?
Let me answer the, the last question first. Last time in the, in the timeline, we decided who the design team members were going to be within each of the forums. And so, for example, on February 3rd, it's the high school forum, and Lisa and Wilder were going to be the, the design team members that, that were at that forum and that were the scribes. So does that answer your question on that piece, Lindsay?
I guess I meant more knowing that, should we be kind of communicating? Because I'm thinking like, like, for example, Jeff and I are together, if we're both trying to type the exact same thing at the same time.
Well, I got it.
That's, you know, versus should we be coordinating with one another to kind of figure out who might do those things so that we seem a little bit more put together?
Okay. Yes, you work it out any way you'd like. One of my suggestions, and I think in one of the correspondence, I said, take turns. So for example, Lindsay, you might take the first response, and then David takes the second, and so on and so forth. But also remember what I said, I might be plugging something in. And don't worry about spelling or anything, just chunk it in there so we get it. We can clean that up later. That's for our adification and use. With regard to selecting your, your top tenors, to be able to attend the first, now the middle school forum. Get a distribution across communities. You know, if it's students, different grade levels, just, just the diversity of kind of open mindedness and people that you think are influencers in those communities that would be good to be on those in that, in that forum itself. So that would be my, my best advice for how to, how to select that. And then once you have your top 10, I think the forum has, from your long list, you choose your top 10 so that when, you know, whoever else is going to be doing the technology behind it, they know who your, your first 10 are. And also, in the, in the Berry model, a feedback I got from one of the teachers, it might be good to reach out to your top tenors and make sure that they actually can attend. For example, on February 3rd, that those high school students don't have a game that they're actually able to attend. So there's not some back and forth, well, we only got eight, and these two students can't do it, and now we're going to replace them. It would be good to confirm that before you hand that list over to whoever the invitation technology person is.
When Jeff.
Yep.
Trying to clarify what you said there about the process. So do you want us to scribe into the forum feedbacks live in real time?
Yes.
Like, what if we took notes and put it in later?
That's, well, here's, here's the issue. I'm going to be moving to some consensus points, and I might need to see that list in order to kind of see what the trend is. So it's better if it can be live. And I think that will work fine. Again, these are, these are our, our info from behind the scenes. So as long as I can read it on the fly, it's going to be okay. And what I'd like you to do is take a long sentence and try to condense it to two or three words. What's the key concept that the person is trying to say here? And I think most of your forums, you have two people that are, that are working with you, and there should be adequate opportunity to be able to do that live.
So Wynton, the participants aren't going to be seeing the, the sheet that we're putting in?
Correct. Correct. It's only for our eyes. Any other thoughts, issues, or questions?
So would it be best to have the same 10 people, especially students, to be on both forums? Like, I kind of feel that might be the case for, I don't know if every, I bet most people don't have that many more, but I feel like with students, we have like potentially 30 who would do it. But I feel like maybe the same 10 for both groups makes more sense. I don't know, David, how you, what you think about that? Just to get some kind of discussion culture going. That way for the round, it's not like starting back over again.
Let me just, go ahead, Ann.
Well, I was just wondering, are there students from the middle school that some may be more forward thinking already about the high school? So might be thinking in that realm? I wonder if there's a way to kind of divide the kids by? I wonder if there's a way to kind of divide the kids by which ones are already thinking, oh, someday I want to be in the tech center? This is what I, are already sort of thinking that way or, or not? I, I just was curious, I don't know.
I think that'd be difficult, but you, other, unless you just did eighth graders for the high school one and seventh graders for the middle school, I think would be the easiest way to get close to that, I think.
That makes sense.
They might be more opened up more being a seventh, a group of 10 seventh graders in one forum and a group of 10 eighth graders instead of, might, I don't know. You probably know better, Kelsey, so I'll follow your lead.
I would tell you that from a breadth of thinking and experiences, it would be better if you have long lists to have, uh, 10 do forum series one and a different 10 do forum series two. For those of you that have long lists, because it involves and engages more people. And I, I think that between, uh, the advanced work that you do as design team members? And the information that I will send to folks, uh, before the forum, uh, it'll be a little stodgy as we get into it. But hopefully I can get them warmed up enough and that you can coach them, uh, from kind of behind the scenes or beside the scenes to, um, have those dialogue starters. And don't be bashful about jumping in and saying, well, I'm thinking about this and what do you, what do your students think about that? I'm fine with you, uh, saying those kind of things. And the other piece is, I'm realizing that in your, your forum role, you're not going to be really able to contribute your thoughts. And so I'm going to spend, uh, some of our design team meeting time, allowing you all to be able to weigh in on these same questions. So that we have a dialogue and you're not just a worker bee, you're also a contributor. So I'm going to build that into our, um, our timeline. Other thoughts or issues? Okay. So I'm looking ahead now, like, kind of the last thing on our agenda tonight is decide, uh, survey communication strategy. How are we going to get this cer, this survey out and inform folks that they should, uh, they should contribute their feedback to a, it's a Google form survey. It's got some dropdown menu items, it's got some open-ended, uh, we'll ask what stakeholder group they're in. How do we get the info out to them?
So, so do you want to just send it to the people who were approached already but weren't in the smaller forums?
Yes, but I, I'd like it to be, I'd like everybody in the, in all three communities, four communities, the school communities, to be able to participate. So it's not limited to those people that didn't get the forum, it's open-ended.
So in that case, uh, we can email, I mean, the same way we tell everybody it's a snow day or send out information about COVID problems. Um, we can email the whole school community by pushing a button, it's, I mean, it's really easy.
Okay.
Any of the administrators can do it, they can do it and Tina can do it also.
What about, do you have front porch forum?
That's another choice.
Because I think the list you have for your school are your, are your internal stakeholders, it's your parents, your students. So how do we get it more broadly? Uh, how do we get Vermont Technical College? How do we get businesses? How do we, how do we, should we put it in the newspaper? How, how do you want people to, to know about it?
I would say the newspaper for sure, front, front porch forum would be good, although you're going to get a little overlap with parents.
That's okay.
And, uh, one of the people that I have on my list to contact that I haven't contacted yet is Linda Runyon, who is, uh, the Chamber of Commerce person. But she might be able to get it out to a lot of the local business people, you might have a way to do that.
Okay. All right.
I can send it through my, my, my rec. I have like a thousand people with accounts in all three different towns. I can send it on the e-blast.
Perfect. All right, so a, as we flesh these questions out for the forums, we'll be using, uh, quite similar questions in the, in the actual survey. Uh, we'll refine that survey next, uh, next design team meeting and then we'll, we'll start pumping that out as well. All right.
Could we possibly leave links on the school Facebook pages or the OSD, uh, OSSD website as well? This is another point of access.
No, that's, that's, the more the merrier. Got it? You might have heard me say in our first meeting, three to eight to motivate. In other words, people hear it three to eight times before they actually maybe do something. Go ahead, Ann.
I, I was just, this, so if we're going to be working on those questions for the, for the survey? Those will be sort of like the ones that we just saw tonight that are going to be in each feedback forum. But we'll have those like, starting, you know, maybe tomorrow afternoon, you'll send those, at least a start out to us so that we can kind of? Begin to tweak them and make sure they're answering.
They're right.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, that's the plan. All right, any other thoughts or issues, concerns? Doing okay? Bet you didn't think you were going to get into something quite this intense, did you? I appreciate, uh, you sticking to it, it's a, it's a big job and I think it'll be a, a very positive outcome. And it's, it's because of all, uh, your experiences that you're sharing and your interest in, uh, helping to make the schools the best that they can be. I think that, uh, just about a wrap for this evening, I'm just reviewing agenda one more time. Our next meeting is, uh, February 1st, 6:30 to 8. I've got notes, I'll, I'll print up the meeting notes that get published, uh, because it's, uh, of the open meeting law. And I'll send those to you as well, uh, through the Google Doc. We're, we're moving, yeah.
I've just got one other question, do we, do you want to send out, just so people have sort of a long-range view of? Sort of the, what the strategic plan was, the past one? Because it's also my understanding that we aren't just jettisoning that one completely. We're sort of still working on those things that were put in place to achieve that strategic plan. We're just sort of adding a little bit more now that we're kind of moving on that. But it might be helpful for people to know what the last strategic plan.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I will, uh, it's on your website, but it's a little hard to find, uh, so it's under policy. What I'll do is I'll copy that into the Google Doc, so you can see what the old one looked like. And, uh, Ann, do you think that I also should send out the, um, the indicator document that Lane, uh, we discussed with the board? Back in October, I think it was, that talks about the key academic areas and the accomplishments and what's left to do? Should that be part of it as well?
Well, what do you folks think? Is that going to inundate with too much information?
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll make it available to you and you can look at it as you can and as you want to. And that then will becomes your choice. Again, the, the new strategic plan could look quite similar to that, or it could look really different depending on what our feedback is from stakeholders? And the direction that the, the design team, uh, moves forward with. Okay. All right, I think, uh, I'm good on my end tonight, anything else? Uh, any last words that any of you would like to, like to share before we sign off tonight? It's quite a, it was quite a whirlwind tonight, I'm sorry that I didn't send you out those questions in advance. But you, you, you behaved yourself quite well and we moved through them. And so I'll refine that, get it to you tomorrow. And with that, uh, have a great night, stay warm and see you soon. Bye now.